Superior Foundation for participating with the stability project because this is a stability certified event. So at this point, could everyone turn off your cell phones? You've not done that yet. So the League of Women Voters is pleased to present this issue, issues pre-election forum for first district and at-large candidates running for the city council seats. Thank you candidates for coming and your willingness to participate and your willingness to run for office. So thank you for doing that. The League of Women Voters conducts forums such as these because we believe that an informed citizenry is the foundation of a good democracy. So if anyone is interested in joining the League, you are more than welcome. Membership is open to men and women. We are interested, who are interested in nonpartisan civic participation and who are more than welcome to join us. You can find information on our website at www.lwvdeluth.org or you could also stop at the membership table at the back of the room here or talk to anyone who's wearing a League button or pin and we'd love to welcome you. Don't forget to exercise your right to vote on November 5th. Just want to remind you of that a couple of times. Because the League has always structured our forums in a way that promotes stability. This is again a stability certified event. So I'm introducing Catherine Lorenz here from the stability project to tell us more.
Thank you. This evening you received a couple of pieces of material from Speaker Peace, the stability project. Thank you. One is the green colored card with the nine tenants of stability which you may keep or return to the front desk when you leave. On the white sheet is a list of expectations of you, the audience members at tonight's forum. Speaker Peace, the stability project is an initiative of the Duluth Superior Area Community Foundation and the League of Women Voters Duluth. The foundation and LWV Duluth would like to thank in advance the candidates and you as audience members for cooperating. Thank you. All right, it's Catherine.
So a little introduction, the League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization that works locally, state and national wide. And we encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as the League do conduct extensive studies and we take some stands on some issues, we do not as an organization endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views that are expressed tonight's forum by these who are participating in it and those are not those of the League of Women Voters Duluth. And LWV sponsorship of this forum is not an endorsement of any individual candidate that is participating. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the candidates. I guess we'll start, well, let's start right here because second district candidates are first on my list.
District one.
First district.
Second, oh, it says second district on my form. See, that's what you get attention approval for ahead of time. Okay, first district candidates, we will start right here with Gary Anderson. Then we have Becky Hall, those who are running for first district. Then we have two at-large seats and we have four candidates running for that. We have Eric Forsman, Noah Hobbs, Mike Mayeau.
Mayo. I'm sorry. Sorry, you're good.
Mayo?
Yep.
Oh, I will, I will try my best to remember that.
No worries.
And Derek Medbed. I apologize, sir, I've been reading your name forever, it's just Mayeau. Mayeau. Our forum, our forum tonight will begin with the candidates giving a two-minute opening statement followed by a questioning round. Each candidate will be given a minute and a half during the questioning round to provide their responses. The questioning round has been set up so that each candidate will be asked in a rotating order. And this was determined earlier this evening, so we won't be going in order as they are seated. First, we will ask questions that are prepared by the organizing committee. And then, these candidates were not given the questions in advance. Then we will follow these by questions from the audience. So we'd like to encourage the audience members to submit questions of their own if you desire. Again, I mentioned that there's index cards. If you want index cards at any time during the forum, please raise your hand and anytime and they'll bring them to you. If you have questions, just raise them up again once you've written them and they will come and have an opportunity to take a look at them. Because all submitted questions will be addressed for clarity and bias. So those that fall into the same category may be consolidated. So this will allow us time to cover as many questions as possible as time allows. Questions that are determined to be unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature will not be used. And all questions will become the property of the League of Women Voters. After the questioning rounds completed, each of you candidates will have one more minute for your closing statements at the end of the forum. So the candidates will now provide their prepared statements and the candidate choosing first is Becky Hall.
Okay, well, thank you. And you, you can hear me just fine, right? Okay, good. Hi, I'm Becky Hall and I'm actually a neighbor of yours. I don't live very far from here, down on 47th and London Road with my husband Pat. We have raised our five kids here in Lakeside neighborhood, Lakeside Lester Park. And you know, we moved here 17 years ago. We purposely moved to Duluth because we felt this was a great place to raise a family and it certainly has been. Our kids are now grown up now. I only have one at home, he's a senior in high school and my four other are living elsewhere. I'm running for city council because I want to get back to the basics. I want city government to get back to the basics, what matters for families. I think about when we had hoped to move to Duluth. Like I said, this was a dream come true for us to be able to move here and raise our kids. And the issues that mattered the most to us were public safety, affordability, and opportunity. And of course, good schools. And we've heard from the school board candidates earlier and I think that's really important. Those are issues that are really important to families. And every day since I jumped into this race, I've been out there in our neighborhoods talking with my neighbors about the issues that matter to them. And what I'm hearing is that we just want a Duluth that is the most, the safest, most affordable and opportunity filled place for us to raise our families. And so I, as a councillor, if I'm fortunate enough to be a councillor in district one, that's what I'm going to focus on. The things that matter to families where we can, you know, support our families and feel safe in our communities. It's the basics like that and I look forward to talking about that further. So thank you.
Next, we have candidate Mayo.
Hey, everyone, I just wanted to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this today and also for the community club for the space. I actually grew up in the Lakeside Lester Park neighborhood and enjoyed coming down here many times for different events, whether it was candidate forums or whatever was going on in this community club is a great sense of like keeping us all together here in Lakeside. I am running for Duluth City Council because I'm an organizer, I'm a lifelong Duluthian. I am a product of a union family and proud UMD Bulldog. And I see tremendous potential in the future of our city and that's why I'm running. I started organizing, I've been organizing actually throughout most of my life. And I'm not going to stop organizing if elected to the city council. Because when we organize here in Duluth, we involve more communities and we get more input on what we're doing on city council, whether it be local government or whether it be our school board. Duluth is ready for community focused leadership. Leadership that stands up for working people, for families, for young folks and those that are traditionally left behind by the political process. And I'm ready to stand up and be that leader for those people and involve all of these communities. It's time that we stand up to devise solutions to address our affordable housing crisis. This is one of the top priorities of our campaign is really working with all of the great community organizations that are already doing this, along with our state and our federal government to see what we can do to attract funds locally to actually work on this. And we'll dive deeper, I'm sure, later into housing. We also need to raise our minimum wage to a living wage so that our workers can afford to live here. It's not fair that someone has to work multiple jobs just to get by in Duluth, especially when the living wage is around $18 an hour in this county. And finally, we must protect our environment for generations to come. Because we only have one Lake Superior, we only have one Duluth and all of this unrivaled green space. So long as we protect it and preserve it for the generations, for my grandchildren and generations to come, so that we can all enjoy this Duluth that we enjoy today. So it's time that we elect people that are going to be bold progressive leaders. And I'm ready to bring that bold progressive change to Duluth. Thank you and look forward to the rest of the conversation.
So next, we have candidate Anderson.
Number three. So thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Thank you to the League, thank you to the community center. Thank you to you for being here and I also want to thank all of these candidates and especially my opponent. Democracy is, doesn't happen in a vacuum. And as an elected official for this last three and a half years, I know that input from the community is just tremendously important to making a successful and prosperous and safe community. So I'm really excited to be here tonight. I live up the hill in Hunter's Park with my spouse Gary. We're the Garys. And along with our extraordinary standard poodle, Hunter. And he was born with the name Hunter and we live in Hunter's Park, so we had to get him. So it's, we're very, very happy to be up there on top of the hill. Serving for this last three and a half years on the council has been one of the most intense and amazing and challenging and fun, growing experiences of my life. Listening to constituents, learning from constituents and from staff and from my colleagues and from other community leaders, collaborating with government leaders, with constituents, with the county, with the state of Minnesota, with leaders across the board has been amazing and fun process. Seeing little projects like the handicap parking spot in front of the post office, that came because Jim Anderson, who is the local Lakeside community policing guy, said, Gary, we need a parking spot there. So we, I checked into it and low and behold, two weeks later, here's a spot. So I love being in relationships with people who can get things done. And I know from experience that I'm a person that people feel that they can reach out to. So I look forward to the rest of this forum tonight, to answering the questions from the League and from you. So thank you.
All right, candidate Medbed.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you to the League and everyone for being here tonight. What an exciting thing to be a part of. A little background about myself, born and raised in Duluth, raised by a single mom that raised my sister and I. And the one thing she taught me at a young age was to work hard and dream big. And from there, you know, I graduated from Denfold High School in 2013. And I went out and I bought a gas station in one of the most challenging markets, you know, with QuickTrip moving in. And it taught me a lot, you know, taught a lot, me a lot about community sense, building with community, working with community and supporting community. And you know, I wouldn't trade it for the world. And going from one to four stores, four to 40 employees, teamwork makes the dream work. And it takes a community, it takes a, you know, strong group of individuals. And that's one thing I'd love to bring to council is working hard and teamwork. And so from there, you know, we continue building, continue growing. And you know, I really found my passion for community. And working on the G and D Rec Alliance, the community center, which you guys have a beautiful community center out here. You know, ours was slated to be torn down. And so from there, we, you know, a great guy, Mark Bolbin, out in the western part of town said, we're going to save it, we're going to work hard. And he, year to date, has raised $3 million and turned it into this amazing community center with a lot of great amenities, up to code, everything, top notch. It's a great place for community to, you know, work through and meet and hang out and be a great centerpiece for the community. And that's what I'd love to do is work hard, create great centerpieces for each community, each different neighborhood that faces each of their own challenges. And I'm very honored to be here tonight. So thank you, everybody. I can't wait to meet you and I'm excited to be here. So thank you.
All right, thank you. Next is candidate Hobbs.
Thank you, thanks for everyone coming out. My name's Noah Hobbs, I'm in Duluth City Council currently, I'm city council president. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that this is my third wedding anniversary and I asked my wife this morning if this is how she envisioned planning our third anniversary is doing two of these forums. But that speaks to the partnership that she is with me and I support everything she does and she supports everything I do. So certainly a shout out to that. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the past three and a half years as an at-large councillor. I live out in West Duluth, my wife and I bought our house out in 2010, 2012 on the Denfold neighborhood and immediately got involved in the Mayor Park Community Club and the River Corridor Coalition and started the St. Louis River Corridor Coalition to make sure that at $50 million that we just recently expended, that went from 19th Avenue West all the way to Fond du Lac, those projects got across the finish line in the way that the community said they wanted us to have it done. And so that was kind of my impetus to get into, into the race. And since then, we've also invested historic amounts in the past 30 years in infrastructure, both our water lines and our streets. We're going to have over $10 million starting next year for our roads, which is a significant improvement. It's still underfunded, given how much infrastructure we do have. In my day job, I work at Wonderful Me Housing as a lending director. So what we do there is provide rehab loans for folks that get denied from a traditional lender. So they're still paying, making advertising loan payments and that's, that's what I do during the day. And so I have a deep understanding in housing and the finance and also the difficulties folks have in making ends meet, both in this market and with our housing. I look forward to having a further, further conversation. I don't need any more time.
Yeah, let's keep it short. Okay, and candidate Forsman.
Well, I want to thank you all for being here and for the League for hosting. As they say in baseball, it's a great day to play too. We had a forum this morning with Duluth News Tribune and the Chamber and now we're back here. So if I look weary, that would probably be why. I'm sure all of the other candidates here are energetic and ready to go. I also want to thank councillor Hobbs because when he mentioned his wedding anniversary earlier, that reminded me that my 10th wedding anniversary is on Thursday. So I then took a break in between and made sure that I took care of that. So I'm not, I'm not going to be in trouble on Thursday. But so I'm Eric Forsman. I was appointed to serve out the remainder of council president Alyssa Hanson's term when she stepped down last year. I was picked from a field of 20 people and I've served for the last 14 or so months. It's been the honor of my life to serve Duluth. I'd agree more with what councillor Anderson mentioned. You learn more about yourself than you ever thought you would. And I've certainly learned more about issues in our city and what our city faces more than I ever thought I would. In addition to serving as a councillor, I also work in economic development for my day job. So I focus on the future, how we're going to bring businesses, investment and jobs, good paying jobs to our community. And so I think I bring that perspective to the council. Back in 2009, I graduated from UMD. The first district holds a special place in my heart because my wife and I bought our first house in the Lakeside neighborhood. Back then, it was about $110,000 and that same house is quite a bit more now. So I think that as we talk about housing, those are the things that are really impacting our communities. That dream of a first house is starting to get away from us in some of our neighborhoods and we have to get a handle on that. In addition, I've served our community on multiple nonprofit boards, commissions, task forces, you name it. I've thrown my name in the ring. It's an addiction at some point for all the boards that I've served on. But I think what that gives me is a well-rounded perspective. It helps me see things from different angles as a councillor and I think that's a valuable skill. And so looking forward to a great discussion tonight with you all.
All right, well, we will start again with Mr. Fordman. Since there's been a lot of mention of housing, so it seems that Duluth needs more truly affordable housing. So what solutions do you advocate for, for this problem?
Great question. We need housing at all income levels. And if you look at our 2014 Maxfield study that laid out all of this, which by the way, we're updating because I recognize that that's five years ago. So I asked staff, are we going to update that? Yes, the answer is we will. We need 30, 340 units below the 30% median or annual median income, 775 units above that, 30 to 50%. And the list goes on and on. We need to build a lot of housing. And that's why seven different projects that have come before me as a councillor, I have supported with either tax abatement or tax increment financing. I don't love that we have to do that, but the reality is it's hard to build housing in Duluth unless you fill a gap. And so I've been supportive of that. Also been supportive of some of the efforts that our mayor has laid out. We just hired a housing developer, a guy by the name of Jason Hale, who was doing economic development for the city. He's an incredibly talented individual. So now we are staffing a position specifically focused on developing housing. And that is half funded with the HRA as well. In addition, councillor Cypress and I actually put forward an amendment last year when the tenant landlord connection program was in trouble. Councillor Cypress and I don't always see eye to eye on things, but we, we work together to bring forward an amendment that restored the funding for that program that helps renters and landlords mediate different discussions. And so that's something that I think has been a win for us. In addition, there's tons of stuff we can do with our city codes to get out of our own way and let smaller structures be built. I'm sure we'll talk about an affordable housing trust fund. The tricky part is figuring out how you actually fund that. And then I also take cues from folks like councillor Hobbs who spends his day job working in housing.
Okay, candidate Medbed.
Definitely, I think that, you know, through city code and regulation, I think a lot of people want to move to Duluth. I think there's a lot of encouragement, a lot of interest in outside individuals wanting to move here, build, raise a family here. But you know, we run into the issue with jobs, stuff like that, you know. And so definitely Duluth does face, you know, as Forsman said, you know, an income level, you know, housing for every income level. But what can we do to, you know, encourage growth, building here? You know, and I believe that is point blank, you know, creating a system that works for everybody. A user friendly system, you know, for, through coding, city permitting and also, you know, incentive. You know, what can we do on that to, you know, at least start, you know, bridging that gap of building in the Northland? So I definitely think through city process, city coding and city permitting. Making it a user friendly, cost effective process for everybody and anybody that would want to build a home here. So you know, the beautiful thing is, you know, one thing I did previous, you know, I bought a bunch of land out in the western part of town and bought tax forfeit. It was kind of a hobby of mine. And then I sold it, you know, to young families or individuals that wanted to grow or move to the western part of town. And the amazing thing is, two weeks ago, they started and broke ground. And on my block, they had just started building their single family home. It's like 3,500 square feet. No idea, you know, what they're going to do with all that square feet, but they're going to raise a family. And it's the beautiful part of, you know, something like that. Even if we, you know, start with one, two, three, we're heading in the right direction. So that's the beautiful part about it. You know, we got to work with everybody and encourage growth where we can. And that was the small inch by inch process that, you know, I could accomplish. So, thank you.
Okay, candidate Hobbs.
Thank you. Yeah, so I think part of it is we have an aging population. Duluth does not have necessarily a senior friendly housing market. Most homes are, you know, two store, one and a half stories. And as seniors age, mobility tends to decline and that becomes a difficult proposition for seniors. And they want to remain in their home and live with dignity in the remaining years that they have. And that's an important concept of getting them from their current place that they call home into a new place that, that they can call home and still be self-sufficient. What that does is also opens up the market for first or second time home buyers. And that's part of, part of the equation on solving our housing gap. We have a significant amount of units to create and I think increasing that density we've had about, I've been on the council just a little bit longer than councillor Forsman, I think I've had 11 projects that we voted on. And that's been in varying levels of Garfield Square. And that's opened up the Esmond former Seaway Hotel for redevelopment, which is going to be a promising, a promising development on that block with what has been a troubled property in the past. And so there are a lot of ways that we can increase density. And folks have demographics that have changed where folks are waiting later to get married or if they choose to get married. So demographics aren't having three or four people per housing unit anymore. It's actually one or two. And if they do have kids or choose to have kids, it's later in life and it's not the three or four. And so we have to build housing that's also appropriate for that younger generation. It's also not coupling up at a younger age as past generations. So I think it's being conscious of demographics, but people do want to invest in Duluth and move here, work and play. So how do we meet that demand with subsidy and supply?
Okay, candidate Hall.
You know, I recently read the Housing Indicator report and it talked about a lot of the issues that you are bringing up tonight. And I look at our community and I see that we are, you know, we are creating some housing. There's still a need for about 3,000 units of affordable housing. And when I think about affordable housing and families wanting to move here, retirees wanting to stay here, part of that affordability equation is reasonable property taxes. And as I'm out there door knocking every day, especially with our retiree community, it's, it's getting kind of risky for them when property taxes continue to grow, but yet their income isn't growing yet. And I'm approaching that retirement age myself. And I think we need a city council that, that considers that, that that's an important factor when it comes to affording a home. Even for younger families as well. When we were moving here, we certainly didn't want to be in a community where we were paying high taxes on that home. So that's a huge factor along with making sure we have the proper regulations for, for building as well as renovation. Our housing stock is, is older, 50 years or more older. We, you know, there, I used to work in economic development, so I know there are plenty of resources and partnerships to work with in our community to address this issue. It's a tough issue. I'm glad to see that our mayor is on the governor's housing task force as well as a regional task force. And I look forward to working with a council that addresses that issue.
Candidate Anderson.
Thank you. So housing has been an issue that's been on top, top of priority list for the council as long as I've been there. And I'm glad councillor Hobbs has been keeping track. So that 11 votes that we've had for housing projects since councillor Hobbs and I were elected in 2015. We have a long way to go. And it takes a lot of creative work on the parts of many different people. Federal, state, county, municipal agencies as well as non, local government agencies, non-governmental agencies. So all working together. We're very fortunate in Duluth to have an organization like One Roof, that formerly known as the Northern Communities Land Trust that councillor Hobbs works for today. The first home that I owned in Duluth was purchased with cooperation from the Northern Communities Land Trust. So those public-private partnerships are really important. And that's what brought, it was actually One Roof was the developer for the nine houses that are on J Street. The newest houses pretty much in Lakeside. A program that no one else has mentioned tonight or an idea is that we have small mom and pop landlords, if you will. You know, my friend Jerry Woody lives up in Hunter's Park and he calls me and says, why are we giving all this TIF money to the big corporations? What about us small landlords? So I'd really like to see more programs. There are some programs with low and no interest loans for landlords and for homeowners. So we can really try to utilize all the programs that are available.
Okay, thank you. The next question will be, we'll start with.
Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I was going to say we're going to start with Mr. Mayo, but I guess you're last, so go ahead.
All right, I would love to answer the affordable housing question. And I can answer the next one too. So that's actually been a huge concern that's been brought up on the doors. Pretty much every door I knock on, we talk about affordable housing. I talked to a family last week out in West Duluth and they were really concerned that their kids are having to move elsewhere because they can't afford the cost of living in Duluth. So we're facing a crisis locally and we need to define it as a crisis. I also think it's important to define when we're talking about affordable housing, what are we actually talking about? We're talking about area median income rather than the market rate of homes around here. Because we need to make sure people can afford to live in their homes, making what they're living, regardless of what the market rates are going on out there. So housing is a human right and it's not fair that someone, an average Duluth worker actually needs to work 75 hours a week to afford a two-bedroom apartment in our city, which is crazy. So I have a couple ideas that I would really be excited to work on as a city councillor. Creating an affordable housing trust fund, which would help also attract state and federal monies towards local projects. Passing citywide protections for our renters here. And also making sure that we're improving our current housing stock and working on density options so that we can afford to house people in our city as it is. I also think it's important when we're talking about TIF funds or other money coming from the city that we have a requirement and we establish some sort of requirement that maybe 20% or more of that housing has to be affordable if they're going to receive those funds and assistance.
Well, that's a perfect lead in, as TIF was mentioned at least three times, housing was prior. For you, Mr. Mayo, when is it appropriate to use TIF, tax increment financing?
So I think with tax increment financing, there is definitely a time and a place to use it. As I was talking about, when we're, when we have projects that are going to be beneficial to the wider community in the area that we're working on, such as building affordable units, I think that's really important that we're using our TIF funds there. There have been recent projects that have received TIF funding that I think we really needed to take a little bit of a step back and say, what is going to be the impact of this project in the future and how is this going to serve our wider, greater community? So that's really where I think TIF funding is best used is really when we're serving the interests of the community, whether it be housing or really trying to build up a sense of our core investment areas around the city of Duluth.
Okay, candidate Hall.
When it comes to TIF, and I used to work for the state of Minnesota in economic development and I'm familiar with TIF as it's used in communities. I think the approach should be careful because when we're using TIF, we're putting the burden of taxes then on others while that project is not paying taxes. And although the argument is the benefit will be that if the project never happened, we'd never see those taxes. So it's worth the investment, but again, I think we need to be really careful. I think one area in Duluth, and I hope we get to talk about this further, is the area of childcare. That might be an opportunity to consider TIF, working with businesses. That might be an opportunity to consider TIF, working with businesses. You know, we have a huge shortage of childcare providers in our region. And I read a report by the Northland Foundation that said that if we were able to maybe support businesses that could start a daycare center in their, at their location, TIF might be a great opportunity to utilize for a project like that. Because you're bringing people back to work, those who are in need of childcare, they're getting back to work. And the tax benefit, the economic benefit of getting these folks back to work is close to fifty million dollars for our region. So that would be, I think, a really good argument for TIF.
Thank you. Next is candidate Forstman.
Thank you. I think the simple answer is anytime we can attract the business from Superior, we should use TIF. And I only say that because Jim Caesar's sitting there from the development side here, so that is a joke. I think business growth in Superior, Hermantown, or Duluth is good for all of us. So I don't think that's where we should be spending our time and effort. You know, our TIF rate is at four percent. We've done a much better job as a city over the years at being more judicious about how we're using TIF. We started to use tax abatement more often, which is typically for a lower amount of years. It should meet a community need, and we have a consulting firm called Ellers that we typically use to go and make sure that if there is a financing gap, that they identify what it is and make sure that it's actually accurate. And then the city actually will negotiate down from that. And we just had, I think it was the Board of Trade Building, where the amount that they were asking for was not what we actually approved. We approved a lower amount, and they still went forward with the project. So I think our staff has done a really good job with not just giving away the farm. I think we've gotten that number down to a reasonable level. It's lower than Bloomington, Minneapolis, St. Paul, and a lot of other cities. And we should also be looking at TIF, not just for housing, and I love the childcare idea as well, but for industrial facilities as well, for job creation. And this is something that other communities are doing that I work with in my day job. And I think that we need to make sure that that is also a focus of priority as we look at how to use that tool judiciously and sparingly. But also, it is one of the only tools that we have as a city that we can employ to try to bring some of that investment to our community.
Commissioner Anderson.
Councillor, thank you very much. Those kind of commissioners get paid a lot more money than we do. So, you know, we hear about TIF, and it seems very often when a project is approved that has TIF, the city council will receive emails questioning, "Why are we doing this? Why are we doing this?" And as councillor Forstman mentioned, the city of Duluth is, right now, we have about four percent of our property tax base tied up in TIF. The max that's recommended by the professionals is fourteen percent. And I think the average in Minnesota, digging this up way from deep in the hard drive, I think the average in Minnesota is nine to ten percent. So we have been judicious, judicious in our use of this really important tool. I'd really like to see TIF linked to affordable housing, because this is a part of our city where there's need every single time. It was a real challenge. Recently, there was the big new building that's gonna be downtown next to the medical district, seventy-five-million-dollar project. And I was really torn about, do I support the TIF on this project? And so I reached out to Lee at Chum and Jeff, the executive director at One Roof, and the guy from Center City Housing, whose name I'm forgetting right now. And all of them said, "You know what? Don't vote no on that project for our sake, because if you vote no on that, it's not gonna do anything better for us." And that's hard for some of us to take, because that building's gonna have some wealthy people in it, but it's also gonna have people who we want in our community. Doctors, healthcare providers, who are gonna be working in our hospitals and helping to keep us safe. So that was where I voted with that, was to support that project.
Okay, Mr. Medvid.
Excuse me. So I definitely think, Forstman said it perfectly, and I like the phrase, "When it meets a community's need." And so I believe that every section of the city, every neighborhood faces their own challenges. And when a project, you know, that could be TIF-financed, brings an opportunity to an individual neighborhood, you know, we gotta weigh its pros and cons and understand, is it housing? Is it development of, you know, a grocery store, of a C-store? You know, whatever it may be, you know, what opportunity is it bringing to that neighborhood? It's creating jobs, creating opportunities for families moving to town. You know, one industry can leave, you know, and that's the unfortunate part, is sometimes things fold up, things leave. But housing can never leave. So I think that definitely housing is gonna be a top priority, as Mike Mayu said, that it's a crisis. And so if we can really relate TIF financing into housing and really make that a go, that's, you know, it's a win-win for everybody, because, you know, definitely we're gonna keep those units here, and we can use as many units as we can. So TIF financing, you know, is gonna be whatever meets that community need, most definitely.
Okay, and then Mr. Hobbs.
All right, thank you. And so in state law, there is a but-for test for TIF. So it is a difficult, it's a difficult tool to misuse and say that this financing would, this project would go forward but for this financing, and so there's that safeguard. And I think Duluth's been very judicial, I think, like everyone else has said up here. St. Louis Park leads the state, fourteen-point-seven percent. Their city is captured in a TIF district. Duluth is not above that by any means. And I think part of that is fortunate, because we have difficult building conditions. We're on bedrock, we're on a hill, our building environment, and have a significant amount of environmental cleanup that has to go on. And so using TIF for those means, I think, in the conversation of the high-rise that councillor Anderson referred to, there are projects where it's highly appropriate to use TIF for affordable housing. There are projects that you wouldn't want to have affordable housing in there. The developer may not be structured to have those types of units in their property. But the benefit of adding two-hundred units of housing, taking out specialty surgeons and doctors and higher-income earners, is they're gonna be moving out of a home right now that they're occupying that anyone at this table or in this room could likely afford. And that opens up those housing units for folks to afford to move into. And so there's also kind of a domino effect of what we have, that appropriate level of housing for various levels of income is gonna provide for more options for everybody that they can afford.
Okay. And candidate Hall will begin with you on this next question. And if you, if the audience has any questions that they want to submit, just a reminder, do not look at your cards, and we will consider yours, but for right now, it sounds like the candidates are kind of directing the questions, because our next question will be, what can the city do to increase available and affordable childcare for working families in our community?
Sure. So I certainly do not pretend to have an expertise in childcare. I don't even have children at this point in time. But councillor Forstman has carved out a niche and working on this, so I've taken his lead on that. But one thing that I am on is on the twelve-hundred fund, and we're looking at changing that loan fund to have either deferred interest, zero percent interest, or possibly forgivable loans in having that capital available for daycare facilities. What I do know is that we have a lot of shift workers also, maintenance facility, cleaning staff, and also nurses in our downtown. So it's not only just a nine-to-five that we have to look at, it's almost a twenty-four-seven. How do we around-the-clock provide childcare for shift workers? And those are folks that oftentimes fall through the cracks in this conversation. So having those conversations, we've got a great partner in Northland Foundation that's working on that. And we can look at some zoning and regulation beyond that, or changing that to right-sized projects.
Okay, next is candidate Anderson.
Thank you. So in the first district right now, we have a new school that's gonna be opening. Are they open already?
Nope.
Not soon.
You can blame the state, that's a different discussion.
So we do have a new preschool that's gonna be opening right here in Lakeside, Auntie's. I am excited about that. And I'm also, I want to say too, give councillor Forstman props. He has some personal vested interest in making sure that we have good preschools in town. But he's also looking out for the benefit of the whole community around this issue. So Auntie's is a big new project right down here near Superior Street. It's coming, going into an old church that's being renovated. Some piece of work that I've been able to do as a member of the Arrowhead Regional Development Commission was to approve over a hundred-thousand-dollar loan from there, the ARDC's revolving loan fund, to help that school get off the ground. It costs a huge amount of money. So this is, again, another area where public-private partnership is essential. And I'll get to be the first one to say it, that the city council also in the last year, with lead from councillor Forstman, also, we did some zoning changes so that commercial businesses up at the airport or downtown, commercial businesses now, there's zoning opportunities, so they can open preschools right attached to their own businesses. So it's an important issue. It's an economic development and sustainability issue for us all.
Okay, candidate Hall.
Yes, you know, as a mother of five, I know how important, and being a working mother of five, childcare is tough, and you want, you want good childcare. And I think about, in our region, we're lacking about five thousand slots for our kids. I think there's opportunity. I've seen, I've seen it in other communities where cities, philanthropic groups and businesses can work together to, number one, consider a daycare center in their business. I remember when I worked in St. Paul, St. Paul companies had a daycare facility right at the base of their building. And how wonderful for parents to be able to bring their kids to work, they're in a safe place, and they can have lunch with their kids. I mean, I think there are great opportunities, and there are organizations like the Northland Foundation, I triple R B, I always call it the I triple R B, United Way, my former employer, the Department of Employment and Economic Development, that have made childcare a priority. So I think there's opportunity to partner with them and see these things happen. My concern is, as I'm out door-knocking, I see a lot of in-home childcare, and that is really on the decrease. And I'd like to know more. They don't quite know yet, what are the reasons for such a decrease with them? Is it regulations? Is it burnout? So dig a little deeper and find out how we can support the in-home care as well.
Okay. Next is candidate Forstman.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words from my colleagues. The reality is that this has been an issue that goes back a long, long ways. I think it's finally become a community priority, because it's not affecting just families in silence. We have an unemployment rate that's almost at a record low. We have a workforce shortage, and if businesses don't help step up and address this issue, they're not gonna have the workforce that they're going to need. So finally, I think, I've been proud to use my voice on this issue, since it's a personal issue for me. It's been a personal issue. It became even more significant on Thursday when I lost my childcare provider for my two kids. And so my wife and I spent the weekend trying to figure out what we were gonna do. And that's just the reality of the situation that families face. And I'm lucky to have a good-paying job where I work days and then nights in this job. But then, my wife also has a great-paying job. And what if you are a single parent and you work shift work? You're done. Like, there's no option unless you have family in town. And so those are the things I think about. I mean, I have a vision where you can have a child and not have to worry about quitting your job. And if we can become that community, and I think a lot of the tools that were mentioned are terrific ideas, we can be so attractive for young families long-term. And the one thing that hasn't been brought up yet that I want to have a conversation about, and it's on my to-do list, is to work with our school board members down the road. There are communities that are actually stepping up and making public investment in their schools for public facilities that are then school employees to help address this shortage. And that has to be done carefully, but I think it's another option we should consider. There's eleven hundred kids who don't have a spot right now.
And next is candidate Mayo.
Well, I'd just like to start and say thanks to councillor Forstman for his work on this, and obviously has dug into this issue within the past year. And we really need everyone in on this issue. It's an issue that really spans throughout multiple facets of living in Duluth. For working people, it's our workforce. It's also talking about keeping families in their homes and providing for folks with good wages and good jobs. So there are many ways, I've heard, actually, just even using, candidate Hall referenced this earlier, but expanding employer-based healthcare options, even partnering with some of the local organizations here and nonprofits that are already providing some healthcare additions or help to people that need it. Really just working and seeing what we can do also on the campuses of our local employment centers here. We can raise the wages so that our local childcare workers can actually afford, and we can attract childcare businesses to Duluth, because we can be a hub for that. And finally, we can also dedicate local revenue sources towards helping with this crisis right now. Because if we can provide subsidies, whether it be for the providers or people seeking childcare, it can help people afford the cost of childcare and actually expand coverage in our area.
Okay, thank you. And now candidate Medvid.
So definitely, I think the term, you know, that has, goes back a long ways, is it takes a village to raise a child. And I think it, you know, definitely is a true statement. And thank you to Eric Forstman for definitely, you know, I mean, working on this very closely and bringing it to light. And I think, yeah, we can work with the school board, we can work with a lot of people, the county. And hopefully Spear had a lot of great ideas. You know, there's a lot of great ideas here at the tables tonight. But the big thing is, you know, cost. I mean, meeting with a daycare provider, you know, for startup, any business, any operation, is there's a lot of startup cost. So what can we do as a city to ensure that, you know, daycare centers, you know, can flourish and then grow in our community? So definitely, we sit in a great building tonight, you know, a community center. We have many spotted across town. We can also work with businesses, you know, in our community to ensure that, you know, they can operate daycare centers with, you know, within their business through zoning, through permitting. But yet again, the state does hold that regulation and those rules, unfortunately. But we can reinvest back in our community centers and make it appropriate and great for programming for children and get back to the, using our community centers as a vitalization, as a hub for our community. So that was, you know, kind of a thing that we did out in the western part of town with the G and D Rec Alliance. We renovated the building, brought it up to city code, and we do programming out there and work with the Y, which is a great program. And so, you know, I mean, if we could do that through every community, for every neighborhood, and offer those programming and daycare facilities and services, that'd be a phenomenal thing, which would cut costs for providers and to give, you know, parents in each neighborhood an opportunity. So those are some of my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Will you catch the pattern? Now that you're last, we'll be first.
Yes. Okay, back to it.
So, a question for you. Are we repairing enough roads to keep ahead of next winter's damage? And are the repairs being allocated adequately amongst Duluth neighborhoods?
So who has the worst road in your room? I don't know.
Superior Street.
So, you know, the term goes to, is it ever good enough? And, you know, I believe that we can do our best, and we fight every day, we wake up, and we can do what we can. Unfortunately, the can, I believe, in my eyes, was kicked down the road for too long. We had the CIT Investment Trust Fund, you know, but that unfortunately was siphoned off many, too, too many times. And so we had monies available. We had every opportunity to reinvest back in our infrastructure and our roads, but it was missed every, you know, every other time. So we have a great leg up, we have things ready to go, we have monies available. And so we just need to stick to our guns and make sure that we're gonna repair every inch of roadway we can, every sidewalk, every gutter. But it's gonna make sure, we need to make sure that we're also focusing on the underground infrastructure. And I know it's very costly, but if we're not doing it the right way, focusing on the storms, the sewers, all, you know, all that good stuff, are we doing it the correct way? So I think we're doing the best we can, and we're gonna continue on that. But it's just sticking to our guns is gonna be the most important thing. And as a hopeful city council, you know, councillor, I would hope to be that guy that would really fight hard for Duluth and wake up every day and say, you know, we're gonna do it, we're gonna keep on moving forward and make it happen and fix every road we can until we're done. You know, I might be a hundred and ten in the nursing home, but, you know, my wheelchair will, you know, roll down the sidewalks and streets of Duluth easily. So that'll be the beautiful way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Candidate Hobbs, please.
Yeah, are we doing, are we doing enough? We are doing the best we can currently. I think you look at, we have over four hundred miles of road. The lifespan of a road is twenty-five years, and so that's, you know, we have a shortage. So we're not adequately funding our infrastructure to answer that question. But we are doing the best, and everyone does live on the worst street in Duluth. But we do have, starting next, next year, we'll have ten million dollars a year for just our streets. And prior to that, we put ourselves on a sustainable, a hundred-year sustainable replacement plan for our water lines underneath. So we can now pair that up without having to raid one fund for the other if a water line breaks or if the road is in such poor condition, and we do replace a water line underneath. So now we can have a real, true, accurate picture of when we're gonna fix streets and what's beneath it. So we have done that. So I do agree with candidate Medvid that the can has been kicked down the road. And I think that this council and administration has taken significant steps to correct that and take responsibility and do the right thing. We can always do more for infrastructure. Again, we are underfunded in that, but we are now at the highest level that we've been funded in thirty years for infrastructure.
Okay. Next is candidate Mayo.
So I would like to start and say that I think we're making great investments into our street repairs. Obviously, with the new sales tax, that'll be, we'll be able to dig into that money starting in January of 2020 and have double the amount of street crews out actually patching and filling these holes. Just to really quick, go over to the other part of the question that was asked that hasn't really been addressed yet, is are we repairing streets across the entire city equally and fairly? And I think there is a little bit of question about that, because there are definitely neighborhoods that need a lot of improvement. However, one of the things that I think we need to work on as a city is letting people know about the tool that's on our website now, which allows people to actually request that there be a pothole or some sort of street repair fixed wherever they are. You can go online, log on to the city's website, and there's a tool on there. However, I do think that that tool also, you know, when we don't market it well enough, when people don't know about it, a lot of folks at these forums usually don't know that that tool even exists. don't know that that tool even exists. It does provide an accessibility issue for folks that can't even get online sometimes. So it is really a point of privilege for someone to be able to log on, to get on there, to request it, to have enough time to do that in their day when they're working full-time or whatever it is. So really, making our streets accessible and open to everyone is great. I think we're making great strides into the future. And by maintaining our roads incrementally, we're really preserving the time and the actual cost of repairing a whole entire road in the future. And it preserves the lifespan of that road.
Okay. And then next is candidate Hall.
Can you repeat that question?
Yes. Are we, are we repairing enough roads to keep ahead of next winter's damage? And are we, are repairs being allocated adequately amongst the Duluth neighborhoods?
Okay. I don't want to be a Debbie Downer here or anything, but I'm going to be really honest. And I, my answer to that is no, we're not. We have been talking about fixing the streets for years. And all you need to do when you leave here tonight and head home, just drive down Superior Street and you'll see what I'm talking about. It's like a rollercoaster and it's been that way for a very long time. And, you know, it was 10, 12 years ago that I ran for city council once before, and the topic of streets was the topic of conversation back then, too. And back then, we had a fund, the Community Investment Trust Fund, that was supposed to go towards fixing our streets. But it was always allocated off to other projects, not our streets. When I'm out door knocking with our neighbors, this is what I'm talking about, getting back to the basics, public safety, fixing our streets and the water lines underneath. When I talk with that, with our neighbors, they say, yes, please, can we finally fix the streets? You know, we just recently voted for a sales tax increase to solely create a fund to fix our streets. And our neighbors expect us to take those revenues and dedicate them to repairing our streets. So as your councillor, this is what I say to my neighbors. I will watch that money like a hawk to make sure that it goes to fixing the streets and not promised off to other projects. So we can get cracking on it. We have a lot of work to do. We've put it off for way too long.
Okay. Candidate Forssman.
First part of the question, are we going to have next winter's damage? Nope. We don't collect sales tax until October 1st. And I realize now I dodged a question at the chamber forum that I'll answer, which was, I think, what's the worst street in the city? And the smart political answer would be all of yours. But I had to laugh at our recent council meeting because councillor Cypress got up and started talking about how Norton Road is the worst road in his district and maybe the city. He didn't know I had just moved there. And I hit a $1,500 pothole on it. So I would agree that it's one of the worst, but there are many. You know, I was proud to go to the legislature and advocate for the sales tax. I did that before I got on the council. We have activities like the Chamber Duluth Days at the Capitol where we go and meet with state legislators from across the state of Minnesota. I did that before I was a councillor, as a community leader. And then because they didn't pass it, I was able to do that again this year as a councillor and add my voice to that. And so I'm glad that we have a dedicated stream. I agree. It has to go to street funding. I've been an advocate within City Hall to make it more accessible online so that you can pull up any street and say, yep, that's my street. And that's when we're projecting it'll get done. That's going to change over the course of many years, but I think the more transparent we can be about that sales tax, the better. We have 450 miles of road. The reality is that we're going to get up to 18 next year. We still don't have enough. We're going to have to prioritize. We're going to have to make decisions on, do we just pave it or do we reconstruct fully with all of the infrastructure underground? That costs a million dollars a mile. Our Public Works Department is always juggling those priorities to say, how are we going to try to get ahead of this as best as we can with 150-year-old bone infrastructure?
Okay. And candidate Anderson.
Thank you. So the obvious answer, yes, is no, that we're not going to get ahead of things next year. So you all have heard about that. And I do, I need to trust the city administration is very aware that councillors are keeping an eye to make sure that projects are going to be done in their districts. And I'm happy so that after two years now of the Water Main reconstruction on Crosley, so that is going to be redone next year. So that's on the plan for 2020. So I'm looking forward to that. And I know that neighborhood residents are looking forward to that as well. Just a couple of ideas. Coordinating our work with St. Louis County. So St. Louis County also has money that's dedicated to streets. So right now, in Woodland, we have the street being redone and the infrastructure underneath it, the street being redone by this county and all of the infrastructure underneath it being done in the city of Duluth. So when we coordinate a project like that, we both entities save money and do good work with our tax, hard-earned taxpayer dollars. We also have a new transportation planner who I just met tonight. He's only been on the staff of the city for one month. And so I look forward to meeting him. Mayor Larson has done some good hiring, I think, through her term, her first term. So, and this gentleman is, came out of retirement, so has lots of good transportation planning experience. And I look forward to that. And finally, I just want to say, we need to increase our use of mass transit, which will save our roads and also benefit our whole environment.
Okay, thank you. Candidates, I guess I'd like to ask you, would you feel comfortable reducing the response time to one minute? We have several questions and just maybe we can get one more in. Okay, so I think at this point, we'll try to move to some that have been presented by the community. We have a couple of questions here that are very similar. So starting with you, candidate Anderson. Yeah, this is one minute to the timers. Where do you stand on clean water and how do you propose to safeguard Lake Superior and the St. Louis River? And another question relates to that same issue specifically related to let issues, Lake Superior. Oh, mercury, I'm sorry, not mercury.
Mercury. So for those who know me, this is an area that I have focused on as a public safety issue since the first time that I ran for office, which was for the House District 7A seat that Tom Huntley retired from. So on clean water for the city's citizens of Duluth and everybody in the St. Louis and Superior watershed is a public safety issue. Mercury in the water is a critical issue. Currently, one out of 10 babies that are born on the North Shore of Lake Superior are born with elevated levels of mercury, currently. And this is after years and years and years and millions and millions of dollars spent from the federal government, the state government, and investment from the city of Duluth to clean up the St. Louis River. And we still have these kinds of levels of mercury. So it's, clean water is an issue that I'm absolutely dedicated to. I believe it is absolutely a public safety issue that we should all be paying attention to for our kids.
Okay. Candidate Forssman.
Yeah, I appreciate the question. I just looked yesterday and the city of Ashland has now dumped about 80 million gallons of raw sewage into Lake Superior since 2014. So one of the most tangible ways that we can protect our watershed is by making investments in our infrastructure. And we've done that with our sewer infrastructure. We've raised rates so that we can try to keep up when we do roads that we're able to also get to the sewer lines. The thing that we haven't done yet is our stormwater infrastructure. And so I would expect you to see a discussion around that next year about, are we going to be raising rates to try to keep up with that as well? To the mercury question, that's a really good question. I actually got a question on a different topic yesterday about asbestos and whether that is in the water or not. And I checked into that with our water treatment folks and they assure me that we are treating for that, that water that comes in from Lake Superior, asbestos does not go through our system. And so I invite you all, the Lakewood Treatment Plant is right in this district, to go tour it if you have a chance sometime. It's pretty neat, the stuff that they do to make sure that our drinking water's safe.
Thank you. And next is candidate Medved.
So definitely, I think that, you know, we can all agree, clean water is a huge priority in our community. We have a beautiful lake and we're all proud of it. And we want it to be present for years to come and, you know, for our grandkids and so on and so forth. You know, a couple of things, you know, on the western part of town, you know, we see the steel plant cleanup for years and years of pollution. And the DNR and a lot of other affiliated parties in the government are working on cleaning it up. We see the Westinghouse site, tons of pollution at the bottom of the river that, you know, was not recognized until the steel plant site was brought up. And so they're working on cleaning that up. So there's a lot of things, a lot of projects that can definitely be worked on. And I fully support the cleaning up of that St. Louis River corridor. And so, you know, we can do all we can do to ensure that, you know, clean water and safe water in our community. So that's my comment for that.
Thank you, sir. Next is candidate Hobs.
Yeah. Cleaning up the river is, I think, super important. If we didn't have Lake Superior, we'd be a river, a river city and a significant one at that. And I come from Encino, which is also a river, a river town. And there are multiple cities across the country that have done that. Pittsburgh's one of them. It has a lot of similarities to Duluth. I think we look at, we know better now, storm runoff. And it's tough, we're on a hill, everything runs down. So how do we capture that with our infrastructure and designing of that is important. And I think city staff is taking that more into account as time goes on and learn more about that. I think that stormwater is also, like councillor Forssman said, we took care of the water line issue. But now that's the next big infrastructure upgrade that we need if we were to be serious about having continually clean water in the city. And that's something that I'm certainly willing to work on as I've worked on the water rate project before for the water lines two years ago. And I'll continue to do that going forward.
Thank you, sir. Candidate Mayo.
So I just want to start off by saying, I'm really proud to be the only candidate in the at-large race to be endorsed by both Duluth for Clean Water and the Sierra Club. And we really need to address our climate crisis now. I think I am just going to open up the conversation and say it. I believe that we need to take a stance as a city against polymet. We have a lot of projects that are proposed in our region, including polymet, twin metals, and line three, all of which take place within our area and our watersheds. And we need to pass a resolution saying that we're going to stand up for the rights of our lake, the rights of our region, and the rights of our entire ecosystem, pass Green New Deal-type legislation. We had, referring back to the asbestos in the water, Reserve Mining was dumping its tailings into Lake Superior for years. And then what happened when Duluth found out? We were drinking asbestos. We don't want that to happen. We want to be proactive, not reactive, and protect our environment for generations to come because I want it to be there when my grandchildren are around. And I want Duluth to be there for everyone to enjoy.
Sir, and last is candidate Hobs.
Right. Well, we can all agree that we want the cleanest water possible for our community, for our families. And I consider this, once again, a basic for city government. We have an opportunity now with our, the sales tax increase, the fund for infrastructure. And that includes making sure that not just, it's not so much that we should be excited about how many miles of road we can fix, streets we can fix in our community. When I'm talking to our neighbors out there at the doors, it's doing it right. And we have some of the oldest water lines, sewer lines in the city. And so along with fixing, infrastructure includes repairing that very well as well, so that we have good water running through our pipes as well as good streets to drive on. So again, opportunities with this new fund should address that as well.
Okay. Candidate Hall, we will start with you with this question. Do you support or oppose five cent charge for plastic bags and why? So it was brought before the city council yesterday evening, I think?
You know, that's an excellent question. As a matter of fact, this morning, we had a forum with the Duluth News Tribune and the Chamber of Commerce. And then I went out door knocking today. And as I door knock and talk to neighbors, I'm always saying, you know, I just want city government to get back to the basics, public safety, fix our streets, keep it affordable to raise our families here in Duluth. You know what the response was right back? What do you think of that plastic bag fee? Not one person is excited about that fee and neither am I. It's one more, one more place where we're making it difficult for businesses to, how are we going to police that? I mean, shouldn't we, we really should be policing our neighborhoods for, you know, the crime issues that are taking place, rather than policing our businesses to see if they're providing a bag or not. I think there are better ways. We all want a clean environment. We do a really good job about it. I think there are better ways to protect our environment than go after businesses and attack families with another fee. It hurts families.
Okay. Candidate Mayo.
Well, I would just like to say that, yes, I am in full support of the bag at Duluth ordinance that's going through the council right now. I am one of just a few candidates that's actually signed on with the pledge on their website. It's really, really crucial right now in a time where we're dealing with this climate crisis that we take dramatic steps and bold steps to stand up for our environment because we really need to right now. We only have maybe 11 years or so right now before, it's irreversible and we cannot go back and we cannot save our planet. So, and I've talked to actually a lot of people who are really excited about this ordinance. And many doors that I go to, they ask me about, what do you think about this ordinance? What do you think it'll do for plastic consumption and usage in our city? And a lot of these microplastics and things stay around in our environment forever. And when we live on this body of water and this great environment, do we really want all of that sticking around? Probably not. So, and this also doesn't put the burden on the businesses necessarily. This is a fee to the consumers and is actually very minimal that will help reduce our plastic consumption in the city.
Mister candidate Anderson.
Thank you. So over 2,000 people or around 2,000 people in the city of Duluth signed a petition asking the city council to look at this issue. I think there's like 120 businesses that have signed that same petition, asking the city council to consider this resolution, ordinance change. So last night, at Monday night's meeting, there was a first read of this ordinance. Councillors were invited because we have a typical process where there's two readings of an ordinance. So we'll be giving lots of emails and phone calls from constituents and yes, talking to people on the doors for sure. I think this is an opportunity where we invest in our future. We invest in our community through our taxes, our sales tax, our property tax. This is another way that we have an opportunity to invest in the future for all of our families. The resolution or the ordinance as it's there also has protections for those in our community who the five cent would impact the most.
Thank you, sir.
So I'm going to, and yes, I'm in support of this, just to be clear.
Candidate Medved.
Excuse me. So definitely, I think that, you know, we can all understand, you know, the good intent behind it. But as an employer, as a business owner, you know, the one thing my company sells is convenience. And so when we add an upcharge for a bag, you know, I'm in what, trying to change somebody's thought process of, you know, okay, great, you know, we're buying convenience. We're here, we're buying, you know, a cup of coffee, this and that. And so the good intent behind it, I think, is missed in a convenience store setting or in a grocery store setting. Because people, it's convenient. You go to Sam's Club, I mean, sometimes when I go to Sam's Club, I get very irritated. It's like, there's a box, a box. There's no bags. And so, you know, you get in the habit of realizing, but if there's the opportunity to buy that bag for five cents, it's going to be taken every time. So I think that we need to reconsider the intent we have here. I think the great momentum is behind it. I think there's a great thought process, but what is it going to change? And in my mind, nothing. You know, I'm talking to my customers every day and seeing them come through the door. I said, would you pay five cents for this bag? Would you pay 10 cents? You know, would you pay a quarter? And to them, it's, you know, just an additional fee on their, you know, $15 order. So I think we need to reconsider, you know, the whole process behind it. And, you know, fully, I'm in support, but we got to change, you know, the thought process behind it. Thank you. Sorry about that. Had to finish.
Candidate Hobs.
Thank you. I think it's, as is, as the ordinance is currently written, I would not be in support of it. I think that there is, there's a lot of conversation and merit of it, how it's enforced and that. And I think the council's beginning to have a conversation on it now. And the idea behind it is, is good. I mean, we do have to reduce a waste that we have. I would say this isn't a bold step in solving that. And I think we get caught up in that. And so I think it's worth having a merit. So as is, no. I think that there is certainly a way if we figure out the enforcement mechanism of it. Currently, right now, there's not, there's no incentive to a business to change their practice. It's just a check that goes back to them. They're getting five cents. They already have that built into the cost of business. And so how do we have ownership, both in the consumer and the supplier? And so as it currently is written, no. But I think that there's certainly a way that I could get there, but it's, it's not there yet.
Okay. Thank you. Candidate Forssman.
Yeah, thanks for the question. We had a long council meeting last night about this. And similar to what candidate Hall mentioned, we did a lot of things and my email inbox was only about plastic bags, pro and con. You know, as a concept, I get it. And I think that our reduction of plastics, single-use plastics of all different sorts makes sense. I would agree, the ordinance as written is not there. I found an error in it where it said 300 and then 500 next to each other. It was supposed to be the same number. It felt rushed. It didn't come to us before we found, I think we found out on Wednesday. And then it came up on Thursday, for instance, when councillor Hobs was bringing scooters to town. He mentioned it probably in December. And then we didn't pass that ordinance until April, May, around there. There was ample time to weigh in and have input on it. I'm not in support of it as is because I think there's flaws in it. And I'm supportive of getting there. I think it does make sense. I'm not convinced five cents is the number either, quite frankly. I'm not in support of it as is because I think there's flaws in it and I'm supportive of getting there. I think it does make sense. I'm not convinced five cents is the number either, quite frankly. As a deterrent, maybe a penny would make more sense than burdening low-income families with that.
Thank you, sir. We will start with you again, candidate Forsman. And our next question is, do you support the proposal to sell portions of the Duluth Public Golf Course for development? Why or why not?
Great question. Very important to this district and the, and the fourth district as well. In short, yes. We as councillors have to make hard decisions. The golf courses have not been prioritized for many years. They need three to $5 million each. I am somebody who subscribe to the fact that public golf is an amenity that we have in our city that many people enjoy. And they're not just the richest folks. These are average, median income folks. They don't play Northland. The reality is that to be able to invest in our golf courses, we need a one-time cash infusion. We also have high priorities in our community around things like housing. And so if we can look at reasonable development that fits within the characteristic of the neighborhood, I'm not going to take that option off the table. We have not committed to selling any of our acreage at Lester or Anger for that matter, but at this point, it makes sense to see what we get for proposals. And if something makes sense, something fits the community where we're then able to dedicate all of those revenues back to our public golf courses, then I think we should look at that very, very seriously.
Thank you, sir. Next is candidate Hobbs.
Yeah, we should explore that opportunity. I think there are needs. I think we have, we will be providing public golf, whatever route that we choose to go. I think that maybe we are overextended as a city on our public golf options. As is, is something that has been a little bit of a drag on the budget and we're still providing that amenity for folks in regards to whichever rendition of the plan that we look at. And in regards to Lester, it is right next to a commercial district, a business node, and so it wouldn't be sprawl. It's one thing we've heard is that that's on the farthest end of town, but it's right next to the grocery store in the business district in, right over here. And that's, so it is not, it's not sprawl. It helps us address some of our issues. It decreases our liability on something that we still are providing. That would be a, a service, an amenity that the city should, but not to the extent that maybe, maybe we should be involved in. So I certainly am in support of exploring that. And if we can find out if there's housing options that are appropriate for the neighborhood that have a significant percentage of affordability in it, which the RFP does have, I'm for that.
Okay. Candidate Medved.
You know, and definitely I think that, you know, I want to promote the western part of town also, you know, and I heard the, the term also earlier, that we're open for business. You know, we have a lot of land, a lot of tracts of land. But yet again, you know, housing built out in the western part of town is not going to benefit, you know, the eastern part of town. So we really need to focus on those things and just as, you know, on council and on, in, in business, you know, if there's things that aren't making money and things that are a liability to my company, we got to look at ways to encourage growth or encourage development that is going to, you know, create opportunities for my business, you know, and in this case, community. So the sale of Lester, you know, I think a lot of the detail is going to be reviewed and understood, but it's, it's a possibility. I think we have a lot of great investors that have insights, you know, and, and interest in developing units, you know, up to maybe six, 600 units it might be. But, you know, when we talk about housing crisis, it's things we need. And at this point, you know, it's needs over wants. And so we need to really focus on that because it's detrimental to the success of our city. And that's, that's, you know, paramount to the success. So in my mind, that's a definite, you know, there we go. Sorry. Thank you.
Candidate Anderson.
So this has been an issue that I've been involved with as a, Mayor Larson asked me to be a member of the golf task force. So for a year and a half, I went to meetings twice a month looking at how we as a city prioritize public golf. And as councillor Forsman said, it's not, our public golf is, these are golfers who are not going to go to Northland no matter what. So if our public courses disappear, there's going to be people who are not going to have access to that in their lives. But along with golf, we also have the issue of our green space and the importance of that to our community, which is of course a tremendous, tremendous importance here, and the housing issue. So the discussion, I want to say that public engagement around this topic has never been good enough. And it's always a challenge for public engagement. So I'm glad the process is still ongoing. There was a development proposed and a developer who had an exclusive for a good while. And his big idea was really effectively shut down by the council and the administration. And so we're looking for something that's appropriate to our neighborhood and that our descendants will be proud of if there is development on that land.
Thank you, sir. Candidate Hall.
Yes, you know, I'm excited about the opportunities that can take place at Lester Park. I'm very open-minded. I think our city can, can find the right kind of developer to make that place possible for all families in our neighborhood, in our community. I read that golf report that your task force created and I know as I'm out talking to folks in this area, that's a huge concern that they're thinking about. They're concerned about losing their green space, losing their public golf course. And it was interesting in that report how the opportunities do exist to actually double the amount of green space, keep a public course, and even be able to afford some, some housing out there. So I do believe that we can come together with the right developer and have a great opportunity out here to keep the golf course, housing, green space, and it's good for our families. My kids used to take lessons there. So we want to keep that going well.
Okay, and candidate Mayo.
So I just wanted to start off and argue that I do think this would increase urban sprawl and actually green space, what is currently green space. And I have been opposed to the sale of the golf course, particularly because I think there are other options that we can start exploring. Whether it be with public golf and looking at our golf management company or other opportunities that we could explore, foot golf, disc golf, others on the existing course. It is going to be shut down, part of it, next year, starting regardless of what happens. However, there are, it's already public green space and that's owned by the public and we have to take it very seriously if we're ever going to sell something like that. And for something that is going to have to have a lot of utilities and streets and things built in, I don't think that there's going to be a huge economic impact after all has been said and done. So I am currently opposed to the project and I think that there are other opportunities across the city for increasing density, infill, and areas that we won't be sacrificing our current green space in public lands.
Okay, thank you. Now I messed up here because you should have been the ask commissioner Hall or Medved. So I'm going to ask one, one sentence answer to this last question. So, and that's all we got time for. So besides potholes, what issue is the most on the minds of Duluthians as you knock on their door and how would you address that issue on a council? Well, maybe let's just, let's just settle on what's, what's on the minds of the persons that you are leading. So we will start with candidate Medved.
Okay.
Just a one sentence answer.
Crime. Sure. Like crime is, is also.
Crime.
Crime is definitely.
Okay.
Yes.
Candidate Anderson.
One sentence, the city of Duluth is going in a good direction and we need to keep going there.
Okay. Candidate Hobbs.
Continued economic success.
Candidate Hall.
As I'm talking to neighbors, the number one topic of conversation is public safety. Our neighbors are very concerned about the uptick in home break-ins, car prowls. We want, we want a councillor that stands behind our police, gives them the resources and equipment to keep our families safe in the neighborhoods. Huge priority.
Candidate Forsman.
The reality is that streets are one, two, and three. But if I had to pick something else, I would say public safety is a huge concern, especially the farther west I go.
And candidate Mayo.
I would say in addition to our water environment, also addressing our affordable housing crisis.
Well, thank you, candidate. So this will conclude our, our forum except for closing statements. So we will begin with candidate Mayo.
All right, well, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, one minute closing statements.
All right. Speed round for closing statements. My name is Mike Mayo and I'm running for Duluth City Council because I believe there is a choice point right now in our history. We either decide that we're going to invest in affordable housing or we're going to risk that our neighbors are left on the street or can't afford to live in the city that they love. We either give all workers a raise so that they can afford to live here or let them continue to work two jobs a week trying to afford to live here. We either make bold choices to bring a Green New Deal to Duluth or let fossil fuel companies continue to divide environmentalists and labor activists. We need to stand up for the environment we have here. I'm running for future generations, an economy that works for all of us and the future of our planet and our people. And once again, thank you all for being here and of the League for hosting. And I look forward to earning your support this November. We can do this. I'm proud to be the only DFL endorsed candidate in the Duluth City Council race. And as a community organizer, a lifelong Duluthian, I'm really ready to invest in our future. And that's why I'm here and that's why I'm running. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is candidate Forsman.
Well, I want to say thank you to you all. John Schwetman stood for the school board thing, so I'm going to do that. It's been a long day and I appreciate you all listening. I saw some of you at the earlier forum as well. So thanks for continuing to listen to all of our bantering. Why me is always a tough question. I would say that what I've done in my time on the council has shown that I'm accessible. I've shown up and I've gone above and beyond. I gave an example at the last forum about how I've taken opportunities right along with our police department. And when you see an overdose on heroin, it looks very different than a statistic on paper and it gives you a different perspective. And so I've tried to take all of those opportunities to learn firsthand and to be able to then make the best decisions possible as a councillor from multiple perspectives. And so overall, I hope you consider me on November 5th. I want to just say that councillors are not experts in anything. I continue to learn from all of you every single day and I look forward to continuing conversations with you.
Candidate Hall.
Well, since you started a trend, I probably should stand too because I bet none of you back there even can see me up here. So Becky Hall, running for city council, and I would be honored to be your councillor out here in the first district. You know, when I'm out there door knocking and meeting with neighbors, and I've met with many of you at your doors, and I look forward to meeting with many more. Our topic of conversation, as I've mentioned before, is really, we want a city government that gets back to the basics, public safety number one. Supporting our police with the resources and equipment they need to keep us safe in our neighborhoods. You'll see on my yard signs when you drive around, I have a little motto. It's called Families First and Second. And that's a huge priority for families. We want to feel safe in our neighborhoods. We want our streets fixed. We want opportunities for our families, affordable housing, opportunities, good paying jobs so we can support our families in this community. And that's simply the kind of councillor I want to be for you. I want to focus on the issues that matter right here in Duluth that affect our families, not try to take out, take on pie in the sky type issues. It's those basics that families care about. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Candidate Anderson.
We're talking.
You started something.
So yes, it's been, it's been a long and full day and I really want to thank the League of Women Voters and the Community Centre and all of you for being here. And thank you all of my fellow candidates. Serving on the city council, as I started tonight, it has been the challenge of my lifetime. I've been a quiet yoga teacher for many years and to be here as a councillor, as your councillor, and putting myself in the middle of some of the, the most challenging discussions that we can possibly face as a community. I found myself there, standing in the middle, having to listen to points of view and learn and listen every single day. We have incredible work to do, the Lester Park issue, and we really need someone who's going to be a good steward, as I feel like I have been over this past couple of years. Continue to be a good steward over that potential project. Looking forward to seeing the RFPs. And again, I want to say, if there's going to be a development project there, I want it to be something that my grandchildren and my great-grandchildren will be proud of. So I'm really grateful to be here. Thank you again. And I look forward to earning your support on November 5th.
Thank you. Candidate Hobbs.
Thank you. And thanks for everyone for coming out tonight. I'm not going to stand since I'm short and that's a disadvantage. So I think why me on November 5th? I think that I have a track record of, we have significant investments in infrastructure that we've made. Four years ago, the North Shore wasn't open. And four years ago, I couldn't have a cup of coffee in Lincoln Park without going to Mitch's or Curly's. Randy's is no more. But that's, we've made significant progress in the course of four years. We have to remain diligent in addressing issues. We have an opioid crisis that's affecting the entire country. And certainly, we're not immune to it here. And so how do we work with our partners in the state and the county and the federal level, which we've done? And police have trusted me. The police union and the firefighters union have both endorsed my candidacy in addressing those issues and making sure, how do we have training dollars provided for our officers and firefighters? And those are very basic, important needs that a city provides. And how do we do that going forward in a time where there isn't, there's no more, there's not a lot more money coming around? We can get increases in LGA, but that's eaten up overnight by healthcare. And so how do we make sure that we have a fiscally sound and stable city going forward? And we've done it the past four years and we can do it in the next four too.
Okay, candidate Medved.
Okay, let me stand up here. Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you to the League and thank you for everybody in this community for taking part in tonight's event. It's very refreshing to see how many people take part in, in politics and get out and are very eager about their communities to invest and to grow. And that's one thing, you know, with business for me is, you know, growing and investing in my company, working with great people. And so, you know, it's, it's going to be a true blessing to work with everybody in the community, work really hard, get great things done, and, and focus on the basics and continue focusing on the basics and working hard for the basics. So we have a lot of things, you know, in the community to focus on, but we have, you know, we have our work cut out for us, but we can get it done. And I tell everybody in our team meetings every day or the manager meetings that, you know, the road ahead is not easy, but it's going to be worth it at the end when we turn around and say, we did that. We made that all possible. We worked really hard. And so, you know, that's what I want to do is work hard on city council, you know, and really do what my mom raised me to do is work hard. And so, you know what, before, you know, we got to walk before we can run. So here we go. We'll do it together. I'm Derek Medved and I'm running for Duluth City Council at large. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, candidates. Really very, very appreciated all your time and again, for running. So this concludes tonight's candidate forum for city council and District One and at-large candidate positions. It is the League's purpose in sponsoring meetings such as this to provide you all with an opportunity to hear your candidates discuss issues that are important to you. There's never enough time, as we've said, to cover all of these issues. And so if your questions weren't answered or you didn't have an opportunity to ask them, you should feel free to talk to the candidates tonight or contact them directly on their websites. Don't forget to vote on election day, November 5th. And we hope that you had an opportunity to learn a lot about the candidates and issues tonight. We want to say to the candidates one last time, the Lester Park Community Club, thank you, the PAC TV that will be showing these, this forum later, and the Duluth Superior Community Foundation, and all of you for coming and making this event possible.
Thank you.
Can we close on time?
Good job, Dan.